Go ahead and get started with a motion to come out of closed session. Do we have a motion to come out of closed?
I moved at the school board, having been in closed session pursuant to a proper motion to come out of closed session.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion does carry. Next up is our certification, do we have a certification of our closed session?
Whereas the Franklin City School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and where Section 2.23712D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Franklin City School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully invented by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion does carry. Next up, motions from closed session, we've got a couple of items. We've got a... First up, we'll take personnel.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve personnel recommendations as presented.
We have a motion. I believe we had a correction to one in that, number two. With an adjustment to position and salary.
I withdraw the motion.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the personnel recommendation with the changes to number two. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries. And we have an addendum to the personnel agenda. Do you have a motion in regards to that? I move that we approve the addendum to the personnel agenda. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries. Next up, we have one non-resident application, do we have a motion in regards to the non-resident application?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve non-resident enrollment application 22-005.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion does carry. Next up is Pledge of Allegiance. If you will please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving right along, next up is approval of the agenda, do we have a motion in regards to the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda as stated.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries. That brings us up to 2.8, Ms. Moore, could you lead us a roll call?
Sure. Robert Holt.
Present.
Amy Phillips.
Present.
Michelle Williams. Tanya Smith. Dr. Adriana Sheldon.
Present.
Jeremy Perry.
Present.
Present.
And we do have a quorum. Next up is citizens' time, just as a reminder, we do have a few individuals signed up to speak. Just as a reminder, our policy for citizens' time is, of course, on our website. Speakers are limited to five minutes to speak. We do not permit speakers to discuss specific personnel or student concerns during public session. If you do have an item that is a specific student or personnel concern, you can petition to speak to the board in closed session, and the board will consider that, and we'll get back to you and let you know. Speakers are invited up individually to address the school board. And that process, you'll come to the podium and clearly state your name and address, and if you're representing a group, what group. Speakers with concerns regarding specific employer-student matters must have discussed that with the appropriate staff prior to presenting the board and have not had the issue resolved to their satisfaction. Must restrict your remarks to student, to school matters, must address the remarks to the school board, and please do not use profanity or vulgar language, and do not engage in personal attacks against employees, the school system, or any other person. So, that being said, first up for citizens' time, we have Ms. Audrey Lee.
Good evening to the school board. And I didn't dress up for y'all, I just came for wedding. I was a little overkey up here. Yes, I decided that I would come before you this time. I sent in a letter to the school board about a month ago, and I hadn't had any response from it. And I wanted to see, you know, what happened with the questions that I had forwarded to you, and it was in reference to us not owning the schools or giving the parents an option to have virtual schooling. And I was hoping that someone would get back with me with the list of questions that I had. But tonight, I do have a few questions. I have, I'm Audrey Lee, 507 Vaughan's Lane, Franklin, Virginia. And I have served as an advocate for children all my adult life. And I have a 14-year-old who's now at Franklin High School. And I had a few questions that were concerning me about the safety of the kids. My child was in football, and I had to remove him once I found out that there were cases going on with the football. And it looked like they weren't being given enough time to recoup. The ones who had the case were not given enough time to recoup from that before they came back together as a team. And I wanted to know how, another question is, how do we know how many kids are COVID-positive or negative? What steps are being taken to find that out? Is there an open plan that we have to maybe give some tests to the kids? Because whether we understand it or not, we have, a lot of these children are being raised by grandparents and people who don't have access to internet, and they need to be able to get tested. But a large majority that I know of have not even been tested for COVID. And I don't even know, the football team, when they went back into session, from my understanding, the negative testing or positive testing had been done after they found out that there was a positive case, but the team resumed. And then another question is, I heard that, I understand that JP King, and these are questions that are coming in from parents to me, because they know me. I understand that JP King is doing some virtual because they don't have enough staffing. And if that is the case, they want to know, why couldn't all the schools give an option to the parents as to whether they want to do in-schooling or virtual? And then another situation that came up, I needed to know the procedures, suspension procedures. And if that could be answered for me, I would appreciate it. I'm sure you may not be able to hear me right there. But there was a situation where a young man was suspended for vaping. And my question was, did he have on a mask? And the teacher says she smells older, did she have on a mask? Because it's hard to smell if you know with these masks on, and to vape, you wouldn't be able to have a mask on. And, but now, that situation that I'm speaking of has been taken care of, I understand it was reversed. So I'm thankful for that. But in the future, we don't want this to have to happen, that a child, you know, be accused actually without having evidence of such a situation. And I want to thank the high school. I've been, had been called to ask to join the parent advisory board. And I'm hoping that that advisory board would soon come into existence, because it seems like we really needing it now. It's a couple of weeks ago, we had to shut the school down for a couple of days because of threats, and being in this situation that I'm speaking of now. So I would appreciate it from y'all as the head of our city, as far as the school and education is concerned, if you could get answers to these questions for me. And someone, please, get back with me and let me know, and I can pass it on to the other parents who are concerned. Thank you so much for giving me this time.
Ms. Lee, I have one question. When you say cases, you kept referring to cases, are you talking COVID cases? I wanted to clarify that.
Yes, ma'am, COVID cases.
You do know that we do have a COVID dashboard on our website that actually has our COVID mitigation strategies on that.
As I said, I have access to internet.
Okay.
But people, parents who are calling me don't.
Okay.
And if they don't know, and a lot of, like I said, a lot of kids now being raised by grandparents, and they don't have access, or even know, if they have access, they don't know how to use it.
Well, refer them to the school division, because if they're looking for the information, they can contact the schools, that's the first line of defenses, to contact the building administrator. And then if there is no resolution from that, then contact the next, which would be central office.
Well, I know I called to the high school one day and spoke to the nurse, and she said she just got paperwork to find out, to process something, and she didn't know what the testing was, what the COVID counts were. So I can speak for myself on that level now.
Right.
So I don't know if there's gonna change, you know, since then, if there's possibly been a change in that since then.
Well, that's why I say building administrator. So that would be the principal of the building, and then next would be to central office.
Okay, now I've noticed Southampton, they send out texts to the parents. Is that a possibility?
The parents will need to contact the school division, and there, we do communicate through several means. And text messaging is one, emailing is one. So parents would need to contact the school for that.
Okay, so they have to contact the school to ask for texts to be sent to them.
Depending on what the information is, if it's information that we do send out by text message, yes, that does go out by text.
And we're talking about COVID.
So now COVID counts, that's gonna be on our COVID dashboard on the website.
Only.
Mm-hmm. We can't make, we couldn't be calling every day to say, here's what the current daily work, daily.
No, I'm saying they're sending out texts. Southampton sends out texts to tell the people what the COVID counts, they have a site.
Unfortunately, I don't have any insight on what Southampton's policies and procedures are. Ours are that they are published on our website.
If you need help on that, I can definitely find out for you.
Well, unfortunately, that's not our policy, we don't handle that. So you would need to talk to the central office staff, to the superintendent's office, to have that conversation. So I just, I did want to put out there that we do have the COVID dashboard on our website for those that were not aware, that that information is out there. And in regards to any discipline matter, the student code of conduct is also published on our website, which directs and details how conduct within the building is handled. So that is out there as well.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Next up, Howard Socek.
Copy of my remarks.
Thank you very much. I'll hand over.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, and Dr. Sterling, recently, I attended a really enjoyable stage show at the River Road Farm Venue here in town. And the icing on the cake for me was that the net proceeds were being contributed to the Lighting the Way Project of the Children's Hospital of the King's Daughters for a regional pediatric mental health hospital and outpatient center to open next year. The website for the Lighting the Way Project offers a grim indication of the severity of the problems of mental health faced by the children in our own region of Virginia. Open quote, "Our community is in crisis. One of every five children has a diagnosable mental health condition. While early intervention can make a life or death difference, fewer than 25% of those children receive treatment. Suicide is the second leading cause of death for children ages 10 through 24, and more than one-third of visits to primary care pediatricians are for mental health concerns. With a longstanding interest in public education, I have recent, in recent years, developed a special concern about the mental health of our youths, as this has such a bearing on a student's academic performance, physical health, and behaviors exhibited in school, as well as the student's future well-being and success, and not to forget about the impact of all this upon the entire community. Like most communities, we have some great classroom teachers, social caseworkers, law enforcement officers, et cetera, who can each be as good as they can be, and yet, this is not enough to even begin to solve such a deep-seated, complicated problem. And for anyone to simply blame such as poor parenting or weak teachers accomplishes nothing, except to generate more ill will and division in an already overly contentious society. Our best chance for progress toward a solution, I believe, is for an integration of effort across the community, spearheaded by our school system in coordination with social services and with the strong support of city council. Integral to progress also would be the active involvement of area organizations such as our many churches, civic groups, the Chamber and its members, United Way, YMCA, Police Department, Parks and Recreation, the MLK Community Center, among many others. We must come together. Further, my son, Mathias, a psychologist in Chesapeake, is a graduate of Franklin City Public Schools, who went on to earn his doctorate in psychology at Regent University. He has told me that our school system may want to explore the possibility of some kind of collaboration with Regent University's Psychology Department regarding the mental health needs of our students here in Franklin. I have made contact with the Psychology Department there, which includes a community outreach program, and found a willingness to talk about such a possibility with our school system administration. To get the ball rolling, I would be happy to put the appropriate interested parties in contact with each other by way of an introductory email so that a dialogue could be initiated, perhaps by way of a Zoom meeting. Therefore, I ask that the addresses kindly reply to this letter. For purposes of newspaper publication, I added a PS to this, which includes the prevention, suicide prevention hotline number, and I add, but proactively, we, that's all of us, not just teachers and parents and caseworkers, we must do much better at listening to our youths, at talking with them about their troubles, and at encouraging them. Our children are our precious responsibility, and they're waiting for us to act. May our wonderful community be blessed, and I thank you for your attention to my comments.
Thank you very much, Mr. Socek. And if you don't mind, can you, if you are comfortable doing so, can you leave your phone number as well with Ms. Moore, so that she can get that to Dr. Sterling?
Certainly.
Thank you. Our last person signed up for citizens' time is Ms. Betty Williams.
Good afternoon, school board.
Good evening.
My name is Betty Williams. I am the resident of Franklin, Virginia. I've been here in Franklin with joy to all my life. I raise my children here, I have grandchildren here. I have 22 grandchildren and one child. As a grandparent that has a child with autistic problems, ADHD, and with COVID being out here, I feel as the same as the speaker that got up at first. It should be an option for us as parents and grandparents, which is me, that's speaking out for other parents and my family member, that it should be my option to rather not my child come to school or be virtual. My, I have raised five grandchildren. I'm raising one now, that's at JP King. I have had issues myself. I cannot send my child to school every day. I cannot tend to her every day. I cannot do the things I used to do because I'm on so much pain medication due to my own health. And I feel like that it should be an option for us as parents and grandparents to speak on that behalf, to send our kids to school, when there is a lot of parents that say they're not gonna send their kids to school, and they don't. The last past couple of weeks, the kids have been 20 or more in the classes. The seventh grades and the eighth grades have no teachers. This is a problem. There are parents leaving our community, moving out of our community, going other places because of this problem. Yes, we have COVID, COVID is not a joke. It is very serious. And to peoples like me, as a grandparent that's raising children and raising grandchildren, it's not a joke, it's really serious. And I feel like we should have that option to send our children out that door or not. Because to the fact of the, I can't have no one bring something home to me. I have COPD, I can't catch anything. I have asthma, I have sugar, I can't catch anything. And there has been too many people that's putting their business on TV and parents on the internet that's sending out viral from other schools about what's happening. We shouldn't have that. We should be a better community than what we're having going on right now with our kids and our grandkids. If they leave the community, what do this community have? Nothing. So that's one thing that needs to be thought about and brought up. And there's a lot of kids that's in the school, as he said, that has mental problems. And my grandchild is one of them. So there should be an option, whether we keep them at home or we send them to school, that let the parents decide, not the school, not the school board. Let the parents decide, because y'all don't know what's going on in someone else's home. You don't know what's happening. I stand up here right now in front of you and look like I helped a woman, but I'm not. I just resigned, my daughter took me out last month from my job. So as I say again to y'all, let it be an option to the parents and the grandparents. Don't let the parents and the grandparents send their kids out of the community, and don't send them to these schools, to our school. I don't raise too many kids here, too many grandchildren. I hate to go back to suffered, because I can't get a response here. Or the school board don't want to work with me. I'd rather go somewhere and say they're not gonna work with me. I'd rather take my grandchildren, and I'd rather leave the community. Once again, I moved back here for a reason, because I grew up here. And as a grandparent, I'm standing before y'all now, saying that it needs to be an option. My granddaughter was home for one week and two days because the teachers had COVID. Then they put the kids back in school. Now there's no teachers hardly in school, there's no kids hardly in school. Kids come home and talk, whether y'all know it or not, they tell parents everything. So there is not nothing hush-hush, or keeping it under the rug, or being quiet. Kids let their parents know what's happening in the schools. So it should be an option. It should be something spoke about, and as they said, let parents have that right. There's so many kids have missed so many days. And now I have got my sister to the point where she only goes to school three days a week. And then it was brought up why I was picking her up early, that's my choice. I skipped my pain medication, not taking my pain medication, to let her come to school. And then to ask her why I pick her up early, that's my choice. Don't question my child when I pick her up early, when I'm skipping my medication to make sure that she gets there. And this is all I have to say.
Next up is our consent agenda, excuse me, skipping. Next up, 2.10, the ESTER III ARPA funding public comment. If you have been following this back when we had this discussion a few months back, the way that was initially presented, it appeared that we were gonna need to have a public hearing on this every six months. Some clarification has been passed down, and that is not the case, but we do have to have periodic public comment time on the ESTER III. So as part of our meetings, we now get two comment sections, one for citizens' time and one for ESTER III. So we are moving to the ESTER III comment section. This gives the community a time to step forward and voice their comments in regards as to how that ESTER III spending is projected to be spent. So if anyone would like to speak in regards to the ESTER III funding, now is your opportunity.
Could you tell us what the ESTER III funding is?
ESTER III is the American Rescue Plan Act. It is the fourth stream of cares money coming into the school division. We published and voted on the initial application back in July. And that application has been sent in and is awaiting approval.
And how much was requested and what was targeted for?
You can come up to the mic if you'd like to speak, Ms. Lee.
Okay. And let me say this, before I say this, before I say anything, I have a real sense of feeling and attitude, and I think we've gotten off on the wrong foot here. So if we can just pull that together, I'd be thankful. But if you could tell me what that funding is for, and what it was targeted for, and how much?
Well, all of that is in our board documents. The total projected for that is $5.7 million roughly.
Okay.
It is targeted for many different things. All of that is detailed in that plan and in the initial proposal. It's very extensive. It's about four pages of listings of what it can be used for.
Okay, but we're asked to be vote, to vote on it, or to ask questions?
No, this is just public comment, where if you had reviewed it and you had a comment to make
Or if I had reviewed it.
In regards to how it is. in regards to how it is projected to be spent, now is your time to do that.
Okay, cuz I didn't know what it was, what it was about. And where is it located?
It is located in our board documents back from July, I wanna say seventeenth. But let me look and I can get the date.
It's also on the website, I believe.
I think it's also on the website. Yes, it is. It is on our website, on the COVID dashboard, the ARP ESTER III spending plan.
Okay. And does the public get to request funding for certain areas, just maybe dealing with COVID?
You can comment during public comment. You can, you can offer your suggestions on something that you think might need to be attended, need to have attention or to look at funding be allocated for as long as it falls within that ESTER III guidelines.
Okay, so could I request that we get one of the COVID monitors like they use in the hospitals or in the, I can't say that place, but other places that I've been, they have the monitor where you can step up to a certain location and they can kinda visualize it on the screen and they take temperatures and do all of that?
Well, we do, we do take temperatures in all of our buildings.
Yeah, that little handheld thing, yeah.
No, we actually have palm scanners in all of our buildings.
Oh, you do?
Yes, ma'am. Mm-hmm.
Okay, I was looking at that other day.
And that's also in our COVID mitigation strategies that are posted online.
Okay. And what about, can we offer testing?
Can we offer testing? That is a suggestion, and we already have approved that. That was actually approved la, earlier this mon, last month.
Last month, the end of last month.
And when does that go into the data?
All of that is detailed in that. And it's actually, they've sent out reverse nine-one-ones on that in the school division, and it's published on the website as well.
Okay, so everything's, okay. All right, thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to comment in regards to the ESTER III funding, spending plan? Have to do this three times. Is there anyone else that would like to comment in regards to the ESTER III spending plan? And last call, is there anyone that would like to speak into the ESTER III funding and spending plan? Hearing non-public comments is now closed on the ESTER III funding and spending plan. Moving along to the consent agenda, we have several items on the consent agenda tonight. First up is a budget adjustment. There's several items in that, some IDEA funding, preschool funding, some ESTER funding, adult education. Next up behind that, we have the modular V surplus. As you may recall, we did talk about that at the last meeting and we tabled that. Dr. Sterling and team went back to the table on that and revised that plan. This is the revision of that plan as well as the detailed listing. Next up is policy JFC AAA dash R, the student dress code. As you may recall, we have discussed that, had that for first reading at the last meeting where we had redlined to make it compliant with Title IX. Next up, item three point four. This is the, and I clicked on the wrong thing, the MOU with Levoc Family Services. Levoc Family Services. And this is providing services at the high school. And lastly, are our minutes from our September sixteenth meeting. We had them presented for review at our last meeting, and these are back up now for final approval. Any questions in regards to any of the five items in the consent agenda? Hearing none, do we have a motion in reference to the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion does carry. I failed to mention that Dr. Sterling is joining us remotely and Dr., excuse me, Mr. Jeff Rider is here. He is currently serving as designee. So, Mr. Rider, we are now to Section Four Finance and Federal Programs. So if you would please join us for that.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, board. Knew someone put them in my pocket. Okay, so. Okay, what we'll start out with tonight is the audited financial statements of the activity funds from the schools. What happens every year is that our outside auditing firm, this is the first year for Robinson, Farmer, and Cox and Associates. And so they went through all of the transactions and the bank reconciliations for each one of the schools. And what they do is they, they render an opinion on a financial statement of each one of them separately. And they, so they outline the scope of what they did and, you know, the significant accounting policies. And they also render an opinion. What's most important about the opinion is that if, if it's unqualified, which means there are no qualifications to their opinion. In their opinion, the financial statements referred to above represent fairly the financial condition of this entity. That's the standard language for an opinion. And so all of our activity funds receive unqualified opinions, which means that the financial statements present fairly the activity funds that were being audited. They never say, they never say, in any public or private concern, they never say accurate. They always say they present fairly. And so the opinions have been rendered. The cash balances here, July first, 2020 was the beginning. The receipts that came in, the disbursements, and what the balances were at the end of the year. So these are just, these are just the standard financial statements of the building level accounts. And at the end of the activity funds, they, this particular auditor added comments for helpful, you know, suggestions on their findings. You know, they had some checks that didn't have some support, and we had to go and find the support. You know, some deficiencies. None of the deficiencies were internal control problems. They were just deficiencies, like, you know, an invoice wasn't stapled to a check. This, this purchase didn't have a purchase order. Some of the transactions were aggregated and put in in total rather than each one individually. So there's just some, you know, some, some minor problems that were found and they, they compelled, they were compelled to list every single one of them. So when I got here a week ago, and since then, I have visited every single school and went through every, painstakingly every single point on every, for every single school to make sure that they have rectified these situations. So, so especially the high schools, even Dr. Sterling was, was on a Zoom meeting with us and we, we went through every single audit point and to make sure that the folks are being trained properly and that these, we're not gonna have this many notes next year. But they all did receive unqualified opinions. Does anybody have any questions on those?
Does the training, is that something that needs to be periodic?
Yes, due to the number of comments, my associate Angie Edwards here on the ground in Franklin City will be actually auditing the accounts every month for about the next four months straight until when she goes in, if she doesn't find anything, okay, you guys, you're up to speed now. So we're gonna actually do some internal auditing. And the next time I'm back, I will, of course, one of my first things I'll do is I'll go to the schools, pull out the activity funds, I wanna see every bank reconciliation, every transaction. There's not that many transactions that go on in a month, really. Maybe at the high school, but, you know, usually there's not that many, so I can, it won't take me that long to go through it.
Any other questions? Mr. Rider, just out of curiosity, once this came up and the auditors, you know, had these issues pop up, how quickly did we address and resolve that?
We addressed it, I think, within a week. We addressed it before their field work was done, actually. I was over there, you know, one of the, one of the things where the, you know, the one bookkeeper was aggregating, you know, they've taken a bunch of charges and she'd enter one thing. And they used a terrible word to describe that, fictitious. And she was entering fictitious transactions and then jumps off the page. And, you know, even I jumped off, like, what? Nobody enters fictitious transactions, so I ran over there. And we spent hours and hours and I was like, oh, I see what you're doing. I see what you're doing. You're lazy. You're not putting everything in, you're just adding them up and putting one in. Okay, we don't do that. We don't do that. Let the accounting system remember all that stuff, just put it in there. So she's putting it in there. They're putting it in there.
And you're satisfied that's gonna be, that's been corrected and it'll continue in a correct manner?
Yes, yes.
Are there other departments, maintenance or anything that keeps, or is that all handled?
No. We would have the maintenance department.
Yeah, that falls underneath the regular part of the budget. This is just almost kinda sorta like the petty cash, the activity fund for each school.
Then all other expenses or expenditures, just through the main office?
Yeah, those are, those are main office things, expenditures. This, the, the school activity funds, now, they do, they keep, they keep track of all the activities of the school, clubs, you know, stuff like that, one. Two, all of the cafeteria money goes into that check. It's only one checking account at the school. So they, you know, but their accounting records to keep track of all this stuff. All the cafeteria receipts go in, and then they write a check to the central office. And then the third thing is we send over, the central office sends them their local allocation for instruction funds. And they spend that all year long. And, and one of the new GA, one of the new governmental accounting standard board rules is that if you don't, if they don't spend that by the end of the year, they have to send the money back to the central office. Now, they were never doing that before, but they have to do that now. So it's, it's really serves three functions, so. But the, the activity funds, the clubs and all that kinda stuff, those, those dollars roll over year to year if they're not spent. Right, okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Rider on the activity funds?
All right. Next up is the, my standard financial report. This is through September thirtieth. And so a little background, the, the Board of, it's one of the things, the two main functions of the financials is to inform the Board of Education where we are at a particular point in time and to project, what we do is we project the remainder of the year to keep our, our sight on the goal of making sure we hit the bottom line where we're supposed to. So while it is illegal to adopt a deficit budget in the Commonwealth of Virginia, a school division is required to spend into deficit if they have been granted rollover. We have asked for the rollover funds for this year. We haven't been granted them yet. The city council still has to vote on that. So the monthly out of the financials, the general Fund X is where really most of the revenues and the expenses are incurred. And then we have other restricted use funds, which is the textbook and the cafeteria. The textbook and the cafeteria, as they are standalone funds and those funds, the dollars in there do roll over year to year, and the city does not have any involvement with those. So here we are at Fund X. And, you know, what we have here is a budget of thirteen point four million dollars. We've received about three million of that so far this year. We've spent about two point three million. So we have about a seven hundred thousand dollar surplus right now. One of the, one of the great, one of the big things that contributes to that is that first item of instruction expense. You have to understand, between July and December, the instruction payroll is only gonna incur eight payrolls. And then the rest of the year, they're gonna incur sixteen because you don't get paid in July and August. So we jam all that stuff down in June. June, June is basically a two, about a six payroll month. So that's why if twenty-five percent of the year has gone by, we've only incurred twelve percent of the expense. That's why, is all of our ten-month employees. So that's good. And then, so what we're supposed to project, if we have, if we, if we are granted the rollover is a five hundred seventy-seven thousand dollar deficit. Supposed to have that. The textbook, the textbook fund, here in the middle, there's the budgets of seventy-three thousand of revenue. We don't get that. I don't, I don't move that money cuz it comes into Fund X all year long. And then somewhere around in May, I push it all into the textbook fund. I literally write a check to this cash, this bank account, and I deposit it then. So that's why all year long, you're gonna see a deficit here, and then I cancel it out at the end of the year. Now, we have to, we had a, we have a beginning balance here. So we are going to have a deficit in the textbook fund because we have to use up, we have to, we have to spend down our beginning balance. And it's, it's kind of important to note, someone pointed out to me today that the beginning bank balance, this two twenty-six, it's a technical issue of accounting. It's not the bank balance, it's the fund balance. So, anywho, so we're at a ninety-four thousand, we're projecting to have a ninety-four thousand deficit, still leaving about a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars unless Burke Alter comes up with something else to spend on it. And so, so that's the textbook fund. Nutrition, yeah, we, we, you know, we have to, you know, the kids, we feed the kids all month long in September, and then we submit the claims. So we just don't have the claims in yet, but, so we've incurred the expense. So that's why we have a deficit there. And, but truth be told, we, we had too much money in there anyway, so we have to have a, we have to incur a deficit this year to get that bank balance down. USDA does not like us keeping their money. So this, so this, ordinarily, the grants, you know, they're, they're a constant work in process. But in this, this slide here in conjunction with the next presentation, you know, is what contributed to a little bit of our, our fun last week. So what we have here is we, we've spent a lot of money in a very short period of time, July, August, and September, we spent a lot of grant money, a lot of federal funds. A lot of one point two million dollars went out. We didn't get anything in because a lot of that money went out, and like I said, in a very short time period. And I felt compelled now to tell you that when, when it did, so this, see this, this bottom line here? So I copied that to the next slide. When are we getting this money? Well, here, here are all the claims that are sitting at the Virginia Department of Education. We submit these claims usually at the end of the month because we want the two payrolls to tie out and, and all the stuff we spent. And so that's when we submit the claims. And you can see these ESTER figures. The ESTER is the COVID relief funds. So you can see there's a lot of COVID relief money that we're spending because we were supposed to spend it. And so of the million two deficit, we have a million four in claims. They're on their way in. They'll get here soon. I mean, all these guys here, the EDI arrive, the electronic data energy, the EDI arrives ten twenty-two, so that arrives tomorrow. You know, two hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars right there. Half a million, this guy here, this half a million dollar, that's gonna be arriving very soon. And so when these things come in, this, this little thing here is what contributed to the cash flow hiccup we had last week. And so when you add the million two deficit for the grants and the, you know, seven hundred fifty-five thousand dollars surplus in the operating fund, you come down to about a six hundred eighty-two thousand dollar deficit that we're running right now. And so just be advised and remember that federal money always has to be spent before you get, it always lags. You know, you always have to shell out the money before you get it back. But by the time June thirtieth rolls around, we have to accrue all those dollars that we do get in July and August. We accrue them back to June, and that's when that income statement finally equals zero. Does anybody have any questions on the September financial statements?
It's the, the federal government. They've been pretty consistent on the reimbursements as far as timing.
Yes, consistent. Um, let's see.
Well, I mean, well, I guess I'm asking in terms of the cash flow. Well, I mean, well, I guess I'm asking in terms of the cash flow issue, I mean, if, if you, if you know you have an expense for cash flow purposes, it's a kinda plan.
I, yeah, I really, I had to plot that out, uh, recently. Um, so it goes, it goes sometimes between eight and thirty days, so, somewhere in there.
But not longer than?
But it's not like sixty or ninety, you know, it's, it's, as soon as we have.
So we could spend the money and it could take up to a month to get the money back.
Yeah, it could take up to a month.
Okay. But it is, it's not necessarily no one, a, a way to know how long it takes.
Right. Yeah, we, yeah, we, uh, so, uh, now that this has kind of evolved as a, as a issue, uh, we're gonna really be, uh, you know, keeping track of every one of those claim, I'm gonna be keeping track of every one of those claims now. How, when did we submit it and when did we get it back? Cause that, that's, and which is a segue into the next presentation. So, does anybody else have any other questions on the, these financials? Okay. So this brings us to something entirely new for the first time. Uh, our school division is presenting a, a cash flow projection. So let's, let's just start with the definition. What is cash flow? It, you might think you know what it is, but the cash flow, it's a phrase to describe the cash in and out of an entity, regardless of the accrual method that they use to account for their financial statements. So a cash basis financial statement, it only lists the revenues collected and the cash spent in a particular time period. We, uh, publish modified accrual basis statements at the end of the year, which adds a whole bunch of revenues that the cash was actually received later and we accrue it back to the year to match it with the expenses when those expenses were incurred. Up to September of twenty twenty-one, um, the Franklin City Public Schools, I really hadn't needed to project cash flow for two good reasons. One, the monthly cycle of receipts had always outpaced the level of expenditures. And Mr. McCreary had given me a good idea earlier, he's like, can you go back about twelve or twenty-four months and see what, how that worked? Because our revenue, uh, is not subject to the cyclical, psych, the cycle of a, of a, of property tax collecting entity such as the city. The city has two huge surplus months throughout the year, in June, and then they deficit, 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 and then December. And that's pretty much how any entity that depends on two huge cash inflows, that's how their financial statements work. That's not us. I got twenty-four equal payments, almost twenty-four equal payments with the state, the federal, we have about a three to four week gap. And then, uh, but the city funding comes in like clockwork, every month. And the cash balance that the city had allocated to the school division was always adequate to cover the funding gap. So the funding gap, what's a funding gap? So nearly all the financial grants, uh, federal grants are reimbursement type. We have to pay the expenses, then submit for reimbursement and then the money comes in. That time delay between the moment we submit a claim and we get it is the funding gap. Uh, the city needs to fund, or the county, uh, funds the school division that money, they have, somebody has to pay it, you know? And so whoever is the financial person, you know, thing that is the, the component unit of, they have to fund that funding gap. So, again, to repeat, up to September, this has never been an issue, um, for us because, you know, the dollar, the federal dollars, the, the, the Title One and Two, they're all like clockwork, the same amount goes out and in, cause it's salaries, you know, there's not big swings in the, in the, in the money. So, um, at this point, I would like to know, I make, it must be noted, the school division does not have a checking account. We, all right, we have a cafeteria, we have a tech, we don't have the main checking account, that's not our account, that's the city's bank account. Uh, we write checks on their checking account and all of our revenue flows into their checking account. So, what happened? So in September, the school division paid out the largest portions of the mod A replacement, the bathroom refurbishment. And we had to very quickly spend down grants that hadn't been spent down because they had a September thirtieth deadline. And, which I didn't put in here, which I should've, it's the first month of the teacher payroll. So all of these, can, these things conspired to reduce the city's, remember, it's the city's checking account, to reduce the city's cash. And they had an allocated balance to us that it went negative. So we got a call from the city that said, hey, um, we have to use our reserves to cover your shortfall. And, um, so what happened was, um, you know, just for a little historical reference, it's important to note also that in two thousand sixteen, the same thing happened, but that was an actual, uh, actual deficit that the division had incurred and the city did have to actually cover that with their money and that, that money never came back. This isn't the same thing. It is an actual short-term shortage, but it is going to be made up in the coming weeks. This money is on its way, it's on its way. So it's not as though it's gone, it's on its way. And so, what I, uh, as quickly as I could, I, I came up with a cash flow projection model, and that's a lot of, that's a lot of numbers here. But what I did was I, I put in all the Fridays, cause we usually submit vouchers on Fridays and payroll usually ends up on a Friday. And so down here, and, and, and I sent this to the city treasurer and she helped kinda modify it a little bit and, and put some other numbers in here, so, you know, and actually, as I started to actually do this, um, you know, the revenues and where they're coming in is, is, uh, you know, like the state revenues are pretty easy to plot when they're coming in, like clockwork every two weeks. The city's revenue comes in, uh, so the only wild card here is the federal. And so, uh, what we have here, um, is in these box things down here, down here in the grants, is everything in these two payrolls of grants will, you know, then come in, I have to estimate, eh, maybe three weeks later. So now we've got a model, now we've got a, a model that, and all I need to do now is fill in the numbers. So, um, another interesting thing that I needed to kinda, you know, hopefully alleviate some of the fears of the cities, like, you know, uh, is that, um, we have, we have other funding gaps. Now, the city funding, that, like I said, there is no funding gap, it comes in like clockwork. Uh, but the state funding, uh, gap, I don't, most people don't know that, so we got eight and a half million dollars coming in from them, but a, a million and a half of that doesn't start until January, every year. One of the worst is the CSET money. We have to crank out a hundred, I think it was a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars in July or August, that doesn't come in until, and then there's gonna be another payment sometime, I think in December, and we still, they just still don't have that money to us yet. They just wait until the, the second half of the year. So, um, and then the federal reimbursements, like I said, we run between eight and thirty days, that's, that's the big one. And so as, uh, uh, our meetings went on with, um, the, the city, everybody has to understand that these, uh, cash flow presented here, they're based on my best estimates. And with each payroll that comes in, we'll actually be crank, we'll be putting in the actual figures and then I'll re-project again. And as long as that, that bottom line there is, still stays black, we're fine, but when it goes red, that's gonna be a problem. And so, uh, this is, so that's why we have to update this with each passing week. So at this time, uh, I anticipate no large fluctuations in cash going out, in December, now, in December, once the ESER three is approved, you know, one of the big things there is retention stipends. So that's gonna be a big, whoop, it's gonna be another big cash drain. Could be between four hundred and fifty and five hundred thousand dollars on that one. And then with each of the other line items in there, I actually have to plot out and I'll probably have to work with the city treasurer, like, w- w- when, when, what? Now, there's a, there's a two strategy, one, you gotta get the money, the second is, when are we gonna, when are we gonna spend it? When are we gonna start the bathrooms at JP K? Is it gonna be next summer? When the city's revenues again are at their lowest point, you know, we have to, hmm, maybe we should try to, maybe we'll try to do it near June or something where they have a big cash inflow. So, um, but the ESER three money, that does get turned around pretty quickly, thankfully. So we're talking about a, a four, a three to four week float that they have to fund. And it depends on how many checks I write, you know, are we gonna have the bathroom, two bathroom projects and a mod being replaced and that's a lot of money going out the door? So, but we have to spend it, so somebody has to float that.
Yeah, that's a question. So to clarify that, what you're saying, so no one misunderstands, the money, when you mentioned city, it's, it's not money coming from the city, it's the, it's just what they're covering for that eight to thirty days, roughly?
They're just funding the federal spending, right.
Until we, the federal government reimburses.
Exactly, exactly. And, um, you know, this presentation was, was done under a, a, a great time crunch. And so as I see at this time, we anticipate no large fluctuations in cash going out the door, that's not true. Uh, I did find out that, um, the, the last payment for the mod and the last payment for the bathroom projects, one's three hundred and forty-eight thousand, grant funded, so they're gonna have to come up with three hundred and forty-eight thousand and then we'll submit the claim. And then the, a couple of other ones, you know, but we, uh, you know, we actually kinda stopped paying bills until we could get our arms around this thing. And so, um, you know, many more meetings to come with the city. But you folks will be seeing cash projections from me, in addition to my regular financials, now you're gonna see cash projections. And, you know, once the ESER three, it's a big deal, I mean, that's, that's, the, that grant is bigger than all of our other federal funding combined, combined. So, and it's gotta be spent in the next thirty months. I mean, we're at the first six-month public comment tonight. So, uh, we had thirty-six months to spend, so now we're down to thirty, you know, so, a lot of money gonna go out the door, but then again, it's gonna come back in the door.
So I just wanted to clarify, this is how it's always done, this isn't new.
Correct.
And you, you mentioned that for, not the textbook or the cafeteria fund, the school system doesn't have their own checkbook, we're writing off of the city's because all of our money goes into the city anyway.
Yes.
So, when do they see the checks that we write?
When do?
Like, do they, do they get to see or, or that, were they just, um, they didn't know?
Oh, no, they actually hand sign each, they had hand sign each check going out the door.
So those checks go through to them and they see them before it actually even goes out the door?
Right, right.
So before there was that deficit?
Yeah.
That was already, okay.
Yes, that process was in place, it's always been that way. And the, uh, the, 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 the practice of a city or a county funding the federal, that's always been that way. It's just that these dollars are so large now that it's, we all have to change our thinking.
Right, well, there's a lot more coming in.
I think we even told them, I mean, we can tell the federal government, we don't want the money, we can do that, we don't have to take the money.
The, uh, so how much, did, I think I saw it in your report, the city allocates some X amount of dollars a month? As a general, uh, I don't know the terminology, but a fund or a?
Yeah, just an allocated cash balance, yeah.
Cash balance.
Uh, at July first, it was like one point three million, um, and I think the year before it was about one point five. Um, so you can see there's a, there's a little bit of a decline there because our federal funding, like with payroll and stuff, keeps, it keeps more dollars out until we get to June thirtieth.
But that, that monthly allocation, that's based on the approved budget for that year, I suppose?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's based on, you know, um, you know, the financial statements of the school division ongoing. And, um, you know, with no infu- no new infusion of cash, it'll either, it just stays that way. Because we don't, we don't run deficits. And so it's probably just gonna stay that way until the city says, okay, here's a bunch more money, you know, for your cash balance, build it up and, if they wanna do that.
And that's the point I, that I was trying to get to, if you have one month that you, the school is right, you know, sending, writing vouchers for less than that amount, but you know you're gonna spend that plus you're up next month, kinda?
Yeah, yeah, it go, it'll just go up and it goes up, yeah, yep.
Dr. Shelton, did you have a question?
Well, he answered it, it was just, prior to ESER three, there weren't these large allocations of monies coming out.
Correct.
So it just has to be a shift in mind, there's a ESER three now, so all of our allocations and all of our spending is going to be high.
It is, for the next, uh, three years, yeah.
And, and just for clarification purposes, because we know where we've come from, we have not overspent our budget.
No, no, we have a, and our operating budget is like a seven hundred fifty-five thousand dollar surplus and the grants are, no, we haven't, and, no, not at all, we, we, we are well within the, the grant budget, absolutely.
Any other questions for Mr. Ryder?
Do we know what our September thirtieth ADM number is yet? I think we were estimating nine thirty-five, nine fifty, is that signed in the back right?
I think it was.
I think it was a little bit more than that.
Yeah, I think it was like around nine sixty-eight.
Nine sixty-eight?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I think it was around nine sixty-eight, nine sixty-five.
Any other questions?
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ryder. Next up, curriculum and instruction. With the lovely Ms. Burke Alter.
Good evening, School Board Chair, Vice Chair, School Board Members, Superintendent Sterling, community and staff. At this time, I ask Mr. Phelps and Mr. Gilgrin to come up on behalf of FHS. So speaking of funding, this is a great segue tonight. Um, Mr. Ryder, we come on behalf of the textbook fund. As I had previously mentioned at the beginning of the school year, I would be coming forth with FHS. As you all know, they added a criminal justice class this year, they're trying to build up the CTE program. And in addition to that, they're trying to advance the marketing class as well. So you will see in the presentation, we're asking for approval of the textbook for Criminal Justice One and Two and Advanced Marketing. So we just wanted to, um, put in, as we always do, the School Board textbook policy for Franklin City Public Schools, IIAA. And, um, we adhere to each bullet. We also wanted to include the evaluation committee that we utilize. And Mr. Gilgrin spearheaded it. And then we also wanted you to know how we notify the public, which is within the policy as well. Posted it on the website, allowing them to come into the library as scheduled, providing assistance with all of the materials available in addition to, um, robocalls as well. And then we also wanted you to know how we had the availability of the textbooks, again, within the library with all of the materials out that was available. And with this series that we're coming forth, as you all know, the textbooks are moving more towards digital. Um, H and, H Hooten Mifflin Hardcore, they afford us the opportunity to where we can get the digital and the hardback. Which you're gonna see more and more companies are getting away from the hardback, as you'll see within this, and I, you all had this ahead of time, so you know. So this is just mostly digital, but we afforded the parents the opportunity to come in and utilize the school computers, to look at them digitally. And Mr. Gilgrin wanted it to be user-friendly, not only for the board to review, but for the parents as well. So he embedded the links within the PowerPoint and they had them embedded on the website. And then I'll let Mr. Gilgrin pick up here from the materials.
All right, good evening, Madam Chair and Board Members, and Dr. Sterling. We went through a series of evaluations here, we did a Criminal Justice One, Criminal Justice Two and an Advanced Marketing. For Criminal Justice One and Two, there were two publishers we considered, McGraw-Hill and Savis. Um, looking at Criminal Justice One and Two, all of our committee members chose the McGraw-Hill. Um, and there were several reasons for that, um, I won't go into them all, they're all here on this, uh, slide. Uh, but really, the user-friendly, the platform, um, with the McGraw-Hill, you're going to get not only digital, but you'll get the print platform as well. And I'll go into the specifics, uh, in the next slide. Um, but that was McGraw-Hill for all the members for Criminal Justice One. All the members also went for McGraw-Hill as their primary choice for Criminal Justice Two. And then for Advanced Marketing, we had a little divergence here, we had one member swinging over to Savis, um, for the Advanced Marketing text option. And again, all the texts that we consider were both paper and digital. So, looking at our cost breakdown, this is the cost breakdown for each of the text options for Criminal Justice One and Two and the Advanced Marketing. For Criminal Justice, this would include sixty print, um, items and a digital bundle, which means that the students and the teacher will have access to all the resources online. And what's really cool about the McGraw-Hill, they have a Read Anywhere app, so when the students are not on campus, they can read this textbook on their phones, on their laptops, wherever they might happen to be and log in. The digital license, the way that they work. Um, the digital license, the way that they work, and we'll see this in one of the other slides, is it breaks down sixty annual licenses for a six-year period. So each one of these McGraw-Hill adoptions is for a full six-year period. And so when we look at the Criminal Justice One, this is the breakdown. It's sixty textbooks upfront with the sixty digital licenses annually, every year thereafter, up to year six. The Criminal Justice also includes a professional development for our staff. So it's a half-day professional development to help them learn how to utilize those resources and learn to utilize the McGraw-Hill Connect Access, which is their platform for all the digital resources. And the total cost for the Criminal Justice One was fourteen thousand, five hundred, forty-four dollars and sixty cents. Criminal Justice Two is the same layout, sixty printed, sixty licensed for a six-year period. And the professional development is included with the fee for the Criminal Justice One. So that's why we don't see it here. Um, it is the same platform as well, so when they do that training, it'll be one-on-one, it will be covered there. Um, and this is a total of seven thousand, seven hundred, eight-six, eighty. Getting right down to the marketing, this is a little bit different. We have a smaller class here for Advanced Marketing. We don't require as many texts. So it's a forty, forty print option, forty digital, again, for the same six-year period. So for the total, um, that McGraw-Hill came in at with shipping and handling and all those other fees were thirty-one thousand, one hundred and fourteen dollars and seventy-eight cents. I know that was fast, and there's a copy of the McGraw-Hill estimated. I'll take any questions that you might have at this point.
I was just wondering what the students are using now, because we have Advanced Marketing and Criminal Justice One currently being taught at the high school, correct?
So we, we are on track to do Advanced Marketing, so we don't have Advanced Marketing now. We have it second semester.
You, you have Advanced Marketing.
We're looking to get new textbooks, that we did, okay, so we.
One block.
One block, yeah. So we're looking to get new textbooks for that one. They, they were using an older series right now.
The, the previously adopted textbook.
For like regular marketing classes?
It's for an advanced marketing class.
Not just for, we, we have an advanced marketing textbook that we're using. We just wanna.
From before?
We wanna update it.
Okay, and what about Criminal Justice? What are those students using?
They're using a lot of online, um, a lot of online materials, materials that the, the Criminal Justice teacher brought with him from his previous division.
And models that he had already created within campus from his previous division. Because we knew that we were hiring the teachers, we didn't wanna go ahead this summer and utilize those without having the teacher of record for this year as part of the committee.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
So you have provision if you go over the sixty or the forty?
So the great thing about license, um, because we have all of the digital online programs and the high school does it really well. For the most part, we tend to stay within our license numbers, because if a student enrolls, then we still have that license, then when a new student enrolls. So each year with all the online, um, platforms that we have, we have never added more than, across all the programs added up, we've never added more than ten to fifteen licenses, because we remove them when a student leaves and ask them when they come in. So we always add a little cushion in the license. Any other questions? Well, at this time, we'd like to ask the board if they would approve for the Franklin High School textbook adoption for Criminal Justice One and Two and Advanced Marketing in the total amount of thirty-one thousand, one hundred, fourteen dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Do we have, does anyone wish to put forth a motion?
I move that we accept the textbook adoption for thirty-one thousand, one hundred, fourteen dollars and seventy-eight cents for Criminal Justice One and Two and Advanced Marketing.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? I second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? We can order some textbooks.
Tomorrow, they can have them.
Yes.
Spend some money.
Thank you all. That concludes the Department of Instruction. Mr. Gilgrin, excellent job.
Yes, thank you all very much. Next up is Technology. And the wizard comes out from behind the door. I love that.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Um, this is just our request. We have a great deal of items we would like to surplus, uh, technology-wise. This is old computers, old parts, uh, batteries, all sorts of, of stuff, uh, that has built up over a number of years. Um, a lot of this, uh, is what we call e-waste, which means it's got, uh, chemicals or data on it. It must be, uh, handled properly. Um, so we have a company or an organization that handles that for us. We use them in the years, years past, even before I came onboard, that's Computer Recycling of Virginia. Um, and they use a process called the, uh, N I S T., which is National Institute of Standards and Technology, uh, compliant. To process to wipe hard drives and other data that would be on computers as well as reclaim any, any, uh, chemicals or other parts that could have done from these devices. Uh, I just, I get asked a lot about our old technology and why don't we give it away or sell it to, uh, you know, individuals or other organizations? And the reasons are, uh, because we tend to hold on to our technology here for a good number of years. Um, some of these machines are ten years old. Um, and if you've got a ten-year-old computer, you probably know it's basically a paperweight. Um, we, we, uh, anything newer than that, we tend to break down, get the parts out of, and then we can repair others that break. And so it's a sort of cycle there. But by the time we surplus technology, it either doesn't work or it won't run anything modern. Um, so that's one reason. Uh, another reason is, again, it's, it's non-functional. We've stripped a lot of it to get parts from it. Laptops are missing chargers, 'cause we use the chargers elsewhere, things like that. So they're not functional. It's not like you'll invest buying a whole complete set of equipment. The, the biggest thing for us, uh, is the software that we put on the computers is not licensed for anything other than school use. Um, so in, in many cases, a computer won't even work, um, unless it's attached to our network and running our licensing stuff, uh, using authentication system. And the process of undoing that is pretty labor-intensive and sometimes on some of these devices is not even practical. So that's another reason. And again, finally, because the, uh, the, uh, we, we generally wanna make sure any sensitive data that's on those hard drives is, is completely wiped. Um, and that's what this organization does for us. Even if we go in and reimage the computer back to factory, that data, in some cases, could be recovered by the hacker. Um, it doesn't necessarily get overwritten. Depends on a number of factors there, so you gotta be real careful with that. And so here's a list of, of sort of what we've got stocked up so far that we wanna have this company come, or organization come and get from us. It's a number of desktops, um, laptops, monitors, we got a copier that doesn't work, a couple printers that don't work. Um, some Microsoft Surface tablets that, uh, that are outdated, uh, computer stands, things of that nature, some switches that don't work, no switches there. Uh, projectors, things of that nature. One coffee maker. I don't know how that ended up in the pile. There, there it is, so, I'm like, there it is. Yeah.
That's a very sad thing that the coffee maker doesn't work.
Well, I tell you, in my, my office, I got two other backups, so, uh, we're good to go. I can't function without my coffee, so we, we make sure we're good to go there. So that's, uh, uh, I put the sort of the ages on some of that, just to give you an idea of how old this stuff is. And some of the quantities are sort of, uh, estimates, because we, we're still getting stuff, you know, out of closets and stuff and counting it up, so I don't have exact figures there. And once we surplus it, we have an inventory database. We remove it from, keep all those records, so. I'm just asking for authorization to have our recycling company, uh, which is a charitable, nonprofit organization, um, come and get that equipment from us.
Any questions for Mr. Spall on the technology surplus request? And I will say, when we had the other surplus requests that we tabled at the last meeting, I did go out and look at the, um, state code according to, of, in regards to surplus, and there is a whole section in there on technology, and this is actually a normal process. Um, so just wanted to share that. That way we know that's, that we, we've looked at it, 'cause I did look at that. So any other questions?
The Computer Recycling of Virginia, and that's the school, the divisions used them, their services before?
Yes, we've, we've used it before, um, even I came onboard. I know my predecessor was, was having them at, so they've been here for quite a while.
How long does that process take? Do they, do, do they recycle on premise?
No, no, they, they, they bring a box truck out. And they'll actually, what they normally do is they like, every three or three to six months, they'll just let every school division in the region know that, hey, that we wanna come out to your area in October, bring a box truck. And, uh, any school divisions who's going through them will get their stuff together and they'll come and get it.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion in regards to the cer- technology surplus.
I move to accept a recommendation on the technology surplus items.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? I second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries. Thank you very much, Mr. Spall.
Thank you.
Next up, item number seven, Superintendent's Report. And Dr. Sterling is joining us remotely.
Okay.
Good evening, Dr. Sterling.
Good evening. Good evening, Board Members, faculty and staff, and community members that are joining us this evening. Today, I would like to focus on something that is very, um, pressing. It's an urgent matter in our division. And this is the teacher shortage and vacancy update for our community. Currently, all vacancies are posted to the F C P S website, but we have reached out to other websites like A D and Top School Jobs, 'cause we wanna make certain that we're covering all areas. We are also working with V D O E Office of School Quality to also identify candidates in critical shortage areas such as math, science, and special ed. And I want us to go over the vacancies this evening, so the board is updated with just, uh, with, with updated with the challenges that we're facing in our schools. At this time, the current vacancies, at this time, uh, that I created this PowerPoint, uh, we had seven vacancies at S P Morton, nine at J P King, one at F H S, and currently two at this time at the central office. But I wanna be more specific. For S P M, for, uh, for Samuel P. Morton, we have bright starts, five teachers with one L T S. And when I say L T S, that is a long-term sub. Though we have a long-term sub in that position, that long-term sub could be working on their teacher licensure or just a long-term sub that is, uh, filling that vacancy until we find a licensed teacher. Kindergarten has four teachers with one L T S. First grade has four teachers with two long-term subs. Second grade has four teachers with one L T S. Third grade has four teachers with one reading vacancy and one L T S. Fourth grade has four teachers with three long-term subs at this time. Fifth grade has four teachers with three long-term subs at this time. Special ed, we have six teachers with two vacancies at this time. So that has increased, uh, to fourteen. We're constantly cross-referencing daily. And, um, we will be revamping our, uh, human resource department to do more recruiting outside of the division. J P King has eight vacancies at this time, uh, because thank you, Board Members, you did approve a new, uh, uh, a band teacher, and we appreciate that. F H S has one teacher vacancy, which is nursing. I want us to, uh, I wanted to draw your attention to this critical shortage area, because this is not just a Franklin City Public School problem, this is a national problem. And this has been going on, uh, for the last two years, and it has just suddenly gotten worse and worse. And it is extremely hard on our teachers, who sometimes have to collapse classes combined with, because there's no teacher or no long-term sub. But at this time, we have, um, almost every class filled with either a licensed teacher or a long-term sub. But I want to take you to, um, some media coverage that I was reading two days ago in a newspaper, and it was titled Teachers Needed in Several Hampton Road, uh, Division Schools. So I started, uh, reading the article, and it pointed out that Virginia Beach has approximately ten, one hundred teacher vacancies. Norfolk Public Schools, a hundred and twenty-five, Newport News, one hundred and nineteen, Portsmouth, forty-six, and Chesapeake, forty. And, um, even though ours is a little under, um, twenty-five vacancies, because our division is small, it's just as if we have a hundred vacancies, and that's, that's extremely high. According to the V D O E's annual report on critical shortage areas, the top ten shortage areas are special education, elementary education, middle education, little school education, secondary math, including specifically algebra and geometry, C T E education, science, foreign language, and library, uh, me- library media, secondary history, and social science. So when I was reading this, out of the ten Franklin City Public Schools, they checked the box that we have a vacancy for eight out of the ten that was identified by the V D O E. So that's extremely disheartening, because we have, uh, we're not just trying to approve the best and the brightest, the entire Hampton Roads area, because the state, uh, is also recruiting, but our particular area of the Hampton Roads area has close to eight hundred teacher, uh, vacancies in town. That's very concerning. On September twenty-eighth, uh, Sept- September twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one, I did write to the V D O E, our contact, Mr. Byers, to talk about alternative schedules. He was very receptive. I really appreciated him. Um, uh, we talked about, uh, shortened days. Uh, we talked about, um, scheduling, uh, some days off for the teachers for professional development, longer days and shorter work weeks. Uh, we're trying to come up with a number of, uh, solutions to this problem. One of the solutions, I wanna thank, uh, J P King, because we had that shortage and we took those, uh, five to seven days off virtually, and what we did was revamped the schedule. So I wanna thank an entire administrative team, along with me, with me, with Nina Stratton, who, uh, led that, um, adjustment to the schedule. And even though we still had vacancies, we have more of our classes covered with that adjusted schedule. So bringing that up, bringing the, uh, board up to date, we still have vacancies. They're hard-to-fill vacancies, according to the V D O E, that we're still going to continue to attend all of our job fairs and really get acquainted with recruiting of Franklin City Public Schools. Are there any questions?
Any questions so far?
I can go over the questions that were sent, uh, to me, and I appreciate Board Members sending questions to, uh, me in advance, if you don't mind, Board Members. Is that okay?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, one question from a Board Member with general comments on the effects that COVID is having on our school and operations and instruction. And I thought this was an excellent question. Effects of COVID in regards to quarantined teachers and students have a detrimental effect on teaching and learning. Consistency of the learning process is extremely important, especially with elementary learners. When patterns are disrupted, teachers have to adjust the curriculum and introduce the same concepts to achieve through a master. Therefore, what used to take two to three days to master because they had the consistency of students coming into school every day or maybe, you know, four days a week and they made this one through doctor's appointment appointments, now they take up to two to four weeks. And I know this is extremely frustrating for our students and extremely frustrating for our faculty and staff. Next, our teachers too stressed. I hope you can see that. I wish I could have this in one hundred point font, but absolutely they are stressed. In the near future, I would like to recommend that teachers have additional half-days in the schedule to alleviate stress and assist with implementing the curriculum because they need additional time to plan and receive professional development to tailor the instructional program to students that unfortunately they have to be absent due to illness, to classes having to quarantine, or just the teachers having to adjust their schedule because of these two components. So as far as the teachers being stressed, absolutely. And that goes from our teachers to our administrators who have to figure out how to collapse classes, have class covers. And I can't stress enough, thanks to the teachers, excuse me, to the teachers, but as well as to the administrators who had to go in also and cover classes and continue the instruction during the school day due to COVID-related absences. Do we need to consider virtual options? Virtual options will still pose a detriment because you do not have the teaching capacity to cover a robust virtual program. The data has shown that our students learn at an accelerating rate compared to online learning when they're face-to-face. We are still working with students from our almost year and a half of COVID, of when schools being closed and being on virtual. We are still working with our students' socialization skills. Many students have lost time to school from virtual learning with significant deficits in academics, social, emotional, and discipline skills. So I appreciate all three questions. It's something that we grapple with every day, especially at the elementary school. And when we really do a lot of socialization, you can tell with a lot of the social-emotional learning skills, they are severe deficits and gaps. And we're getting a lot of the fights and arguments. And and it couldn't, it could be something that started off small, but because the social skills haven't been embedded and kids were out of school, it's taking them longer to adjust to end-school learning. But the teachers and the administrators have been working together with their plans to ensure that our students move back to a more disciplined and more socially-emotional-rich environment. And they're working every day to achieve that. However, due to COVID and quarantine absences, that also has taken longer to put in place. So at this time, that that ends my superintendent's report because this has been a pressing issue and continues to be a pressing issue that we have a teacher in every class to support teaching and learning. At this time, I would be more than happy to take any questions and answers. Any any questions?
Yes, Dr. Sterling, this is Jerry McCurry with Word Six. Regarding the virtual learning in light of the the two ladies who spoke this evening in regards to that, are you aware of, is it the early grades that there's more a request for that option? Or how from, or do you have other parents and guardians asking for that option that you're aware of?
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Can you, can you repeat that please?
Absolutely. Mr. McCurry asked if you were aware of if there were other requests for virtual from more so the the lower grades within the division.
Oh, yes, yes. It hasn't been overwhelming at all. Really, the requests have come into, they'll come into my office and they'll come into the school and they'll send it to my office. But we've had literally less than seven requests for virtual learning. And if a parent is adamant about having her child, having their child go virtual, then they will fill out the homeschool packet and we'll opt to keep teaching their child at home. And that really has been at the elementary level. And I can tell you from memory that we've had at least one, one, maybe two at the middle school. And I have none at the high school.
So if the parent or guardian, as you said, if if they're very adamant, they do have options regard like the homeschool packet you you just mentioned, so.
Mr. McCurry, it's not you. Sometimes I'm just going around here and maybe for some reason he gets to my.
That's all right. He was.
Ms. Phillips, can you repeat that?
Absolutely. He was asking, he said, so if the parent wa- was to want to investigate that option or look at that option, there's an option, that homeschooling packet, if they go through that process?
Absolutely. Now, what I would do is work with the parent that goes through Dr. Carter's office. And of course, I have to sign off on it. But because it is after the deadline, I will contact VDOE, advocate for that parent, and have them turn in their credentials and receive an approval to do homeschool. So yes, that that still is an option. And that is the first option that we we work with our parents on.
And yes, there is actually, VDOE places a deadline by which time, if a parent chooses homeschooling, they have to have that application and that request in.
Okay. I just, my my reason for questioning is I I wanted our teach, or our parents and guardians to understand where we hear their concerns, that some have really strong concerns that there are options available.
And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Sterling, but that that deadline from VDOE was back in August and we kind of let some flexibility with that through September thirtieth?
Yes, yes, you're correct, you're correct. It was it was in August. However, there were parents that did apply in September. And I think there may have been one in October that we did approve.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? One that I would ask, Dr. Sterling, and and I know a little bit about this, but just for public knowledge. When we talk virtual instructions, so if we talk flipping to virtual, there are only a certain number of days that VDOE allows us to have as unscheduled virtual days where they were not previously scheduled into the calendar. Can can you talk about that a bit?
And thank you for that question. I'm so glad you said that. There are ten days that VDOE gives us to close the building for any type of COVID-related activities that have occurred at our buildings. So that's all we get from the VDOE. And I was just looking at that email a moment ago. And I'm reading from it so I can see that, and you are correct, that there's only ten days that we will see if we were ever to close down the building now to and go virtual, just like we used for J.P. King.
So those.
Those days do not count against us.
So those those ten days count towards that ten that we're allowed. And they do, and they, and they do not.
And I'm reading directly from Mr. Myers from the regional two assistant. You do have ten virtual days you can use, but those days can't be scheduled in our intended for weather or COVID-related closures. That is directly from his email.
Dr. Sterling, can you remind us why the J.P. King used those virtual days recently?
Mr. Mr. McCurry asked if you could just refresh our memory as to why those virtual days were used for J.P.K. And you, correct me if I'm wrong, it was in regards to staffing?
Oh, absolutely. It was it was at one of the worst times that we've had. We had a number of teachers that had to go out in quarantine. We had that didn't, but we just could not successfully or safely have coverage. So in order to stop that from happening, as far as as many classes that needed coverage, we took the virtual days, came together, the S.P. Morton, excuse me, J.P. King came together as a team and along with Miss Stratton, and we scheduled the classes. So there are classes, the last schedule was just six, seven, and eight. You had teachers assigned to six, seven, and eight. However, because J.P. King is a smaller school, you would have one teacher certified in math, but can teach sixth and seventh graders. So instead of saying, I don't have a sixth-grade math teacher, the schedule was changed so that math teacher that we currently have can teach a multiple, multiple grades with the same content. So they don't have sixth and seventh graders in one class, but she will teach a block of seventh graders and she will teach a block of sixth graders. Back in the past, it used to be only one teacher taught sixth grade, one teacher taught seventh grade, one teacher taught eighth grade math. And because of the shortage, we can no longer do that. So to successfully have coverage, we had to change the schedule.
Any other questions for Dr. Sterling? Dr. Sterling, anything else for the board?
I just want the board and the community to know that we are working feverishly every day to try to cover these classes that have vacancies to make certain that we have licensed teachers. It is a challenge every day. But that is our goal to at least get fifty percent or more of these vacancies covered, excuse me, fill, I can't say cover, but filled. Our goal is by January twenty-twenty-two to have a at least, at least eighty to eighty-five percent of our division. Because I have to be like extremely transparent. I know it's not going to be a hundred, but at least eighty to eighty-five percent of our division having licensed teachers or teachers moving or working towards a license. That's it. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you very much, Dr. Sterling. Moving on to business by board members. First up, we have important dates. We have, of course, only one meeting in the month of November, and that's going to be on Thursday, November fourth. That happens every single year due to the VSBA Annual Convention being the week before Thanksgiving. And then we, of course, have Thanksgiving break. And that leads right into the VSBA Annual Convention, November sixteenth through the nineteenth, where the board will be recognized for our master board designation. Two other dates that I did have that I just wanted to highlight. The first weekend in November, November fifth and sixth will be festivities in relations to the Wall of Excellence. The inductees will be announced and at the football game that night, correct, Mr. Phelps? And that's the Southampton game that night, too, Mr. Phelps? So and then, of course, the dinner will be that evening. Information, I think, just went out in the newspaper yesterday. And if anyone is interested in tickets and you don't have, Nancy Parrish is handling that. Or, of course, you can reach out to Mr. Phelps and or the high school, and they can assist you with that. Also, that weekend at the high school on the sixth, Franklin High School will be hosting the regional theater competition. So that will be going on that day as well. Have I missed anything? Anything else?
Madam Chair, I'd like to recommend recognize Mr. Lynnwood Johnson. Raise your hand, please, Mr. Johnson. He's a member of city council and he's been a very strong advocate for us for many years. And we appreciate your support, sir.
Yes, and I saw Ms. Wendell and Copeland as well. I think she may have stepped out, but I did see her in here for a bit as well. I have, oh, go ahead, wait just a second. So that's important dates. Next up is business by school board members. Does anybody have anything, any business to discuss?
I do.
Okay.
Back in our August meeting, August fifth, I believe, we talked about the Charles Street Gym Project. And at that time, because of the length of time it was going to take for the people to get in there and do what they needed to do, it was okayed that the organizations or the clubs that use it, like wrestling, would be able to move back in. And I know that we're about three weeks out from the beginning of that season. Is that still the case or has there been, have there been changes with that project that would prevent that?
Dr. Sterling, are you still with us?
I'm still with you. Can you do, go do that one more time? Uh, Ms. Phelps, I mean, Ms. Phillips, is she's, I'm putting here with a question.
I don't know why, it just loves my voice so much. What Ms. Johnson is asking is in regards to the Charles Street Gym, that back in August, we'd had a discussion in regards to those entities and that utilize the gym. And it was indicated that they, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Johnson, that they should be able to go back in or to possibly utilize that facility? And she was wondering what that, right, Mr. Teague had.
Mr. Teague had indicated that it was available for use because I guess whomever had to come look at it or whatever was going on wouldn't prohibit those organizations from using it. I know that we're about three weeks out from the beginning of the wrestling season that primarily uses that during this time. I didn't know if there had been any changes since that August meeting that would not allow them to go in there.
Well, for Ms. Johnson, I do apologize. And I have not met with Mr. Teague, nor have I authorized the use of that facility. So I do apologize for that. And I will definitely meet with my cabinet to inform them that if they're going to communicate something, I would prefer, especially to a board member that is in writing and that I've I've seen it. But I want to go ahead on and address Charles, Charles Street Gym because we do have a committee for Charles Street Gym to look at the entire facility. However, the wrestling team in particular, all of their stuff was stored in the, stored in the trades room. So that stuff has been, the mats and everything have been moved. One of the things I want to be transparent with you is that in June of this year, my executive secretary sent to the high school, and I think I just need to tell the high school to read, to look at their mail one more time because we did, we did have a question about scheduling practice in Charles Street Gym. And an email did go out to the athletic director and to the principal. And if you allow me to meet with them, unfortunately, a lot of things were going on in the summer and they didn't respond. I don't think they intentionally did not want to respond. It's just something that probably got away from them. And the email did ask, is there anyone on the athletic teams that need to utilize Charles Street Gym for practices? So I will go back and work with the athletic director and Mr. Phelps and see if we can get an answer for that and get that in writing. And I'll do a report after this call. So right now, the options are, if it's requested to Charles Street Gym, J.P. King Gym was the first option. And I still want to meet with the wrestling coach as to why that's that's off the table because after school, no one is there. And they don't have intramurals this year or extracurricular activities. So that's an entire gym that can be utilized for the wrestling team. And that was the first option that I gave the wrestling team. And the airport at this time that I think they were using off and on is definitely off limits because of insurance and liability issues. So right now, wrestling mats and equipment are in the storage sheds at FHS. And I will be meeting with the athletic director and Mr. Phelps so we can find a comfortable home for that team. And if it's to Charles Street Gym, it will be requested in writing and they will receive a response and will move on from there.
Uh, Dr. Sterling, the Charles Street Gym was preferred over the JP, was it J.P. King? Over the J.P. King Gym because the mats, it's expensive to put down the mats and take them back up. They have to be fastened down with tape and the tape is quite expensive. And I guess.
They're very expensive. You're right, they're very expensive. But unfortunately, I directed wrestling to go to J.P. I directed wrestling to go to JP King, um, and it, and it never happened. So I don't, I don't know why, because that's where my letter, my email had sent them. So they wouldn't have to move anywhere. So now that that hasn't happened, uh, unfortunately, I, I will schedule a meeting so we can find a home, because I do know how expensive those mats are, and we did purchase new mats, uh, for the wrestling team, because it's a very successful program, but they just need to find a, a permanent home.
Yes, we agree, we agree, I think there's just continued, uh, confusion, uh, as to where they are going to meet. Uh, to kind of piggyback on that, because the robotics team had also met in the, uh, Charles Street Gym, I believe there's continued confusion on their, where they're going to meet, and their, and other, and some other issues, so. That need to be addressed. I feel like we need, these are two, two, uh, these two groups need to have some clear direction.
I, I completely agree, I completely agree, and, um, we are, Mr. Phelps actually, uh, Mr. Phelps has always taken the lead, and he continues to take the lead to make certain that, that, uh, facility for robotics is cleaned out, and I need to find out what we need to do with machinery to be able to, um, really move a lot of stuff out, but, um, that facility at this time has had a ninety-five percent turnaround, uh, it's cleared, we're working with the, uh, the sponsor, but I think we really need to sit down also and work directly with the, uh, mentors, the sponsors at the school level, and I think we can get, uh, robotics what they need, and, as well as, uh, wrestling.
So who, they should, um, deal directly with the, the principal of the school?
I guess you're asking what are, what are next steps at this point?
Right, yes, yeah.
I, I, the next steps, uh, um, the next steps I cannot stress enough, really needs to be at the school level. It has to come through the principal of the school, who communicates with me, um, every week in a principal's meeting, or just randomly puts the phone for anything, and it's important that we build that relationship. So if you have anybody that's a mentor or a community member that has, uh, questions, concerns, uh, challenges with, uh, anything that's happening in our program, if they can please be directed at the school level first, it would be greatly appreciated, because we want to support, it's not so much we want to support, we do support, uh, all programs, it's just, um, miscommunication. And as far as robotics and the timeline, uh, there was a little laggy and dragging, uh, to get things done, and, uh, I sent an email out to one of the mentors, uh, trying to schedule a meeting, so I could do a face-to-face with them and let them know, we do apologize, uh, you know, for the timeline and the, uh, hiccups in the timeline, but we're here to work together, we want to work together, and we're going to work at the building level first, if that's, if that's at all possible.
Okay.
So I'm waiting for a reply.
Uh, just one other note of clarification, um, regarding, uh, Mr. Teague, the question was posed to him, um, the last time he spoke before the board, a board member had asked, we had asked him about the availability of Charles Street Gym, so that's, that's where that comment came up.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, it was, yeah, it was, it was in the board meeting, in a public meeting.
Okay, I, I completely understand, I completely understand. However, when we address the board members, a lot of information, uh, can get lost in transportation, that's why I wanted to say that, uh, it's communicated on most of the one or two channels, and it's in writing.
Okay, so just to clarify, um, in regards to Ms. Johnson's, um, inquiry in regards to Charles Street and the wrestling team, at this point, it will, um, those entities, the wrestling team, as, um, well as the administration at the high school, will come together to discuss what the best option is for the wrestling team, what their preference is, and go, and then it will come back to you and go from there.
Absolutely, absolutely, because they'll let me know, uh, what is the best option, and, um, we'll take it from there. Again, I don't, I don't, um, move the, uh, pieces around unless it's something that we're doing with capital improvement, but we have to make a move. But all of those decisions are made by Larry Gamble and Mr. Travis Phelps when it comes to athletics. I don't, I don't make new decisions unless, again, it deals with something that we need to do with capital improvement.
Any other questions?
I have another comment unrelated to this.
Okay.
Um, I, I just wanted to, uh, thank the three citizens who spoke earlier, um, uh, it encourages me as a board member to, when our parents and guardians and other citizens participate, um, for, for me as a board member, it makes my job easier, because I understand better what the, the needs and concerns are of the community, so, thank you.
Any other business by school board members? Hearing none, then that brings us to everyone's favorite part of the evening, adjournment. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Have a good evening.
I don't know, they were, they were passing it around.
Oh, okay.